Good evening. I'm calling the Columbia County Board of Commissioners, April 2nd, 2024 meeting to order. Bow your heads for the invocation. Precious Father, we just praise you and thank you for who you are, greatness, thank you for blessings, superb care to Columbia County and the greater Augusta area. Pray that you'd be with us as we work through the issues tonight. Give us wisdom and discernment to make the right call. All these things in Christ's name. Please stand for the pledge.
Pledge allegiance to the flag, United States of America, public for which God is able to be and justice for all.
Let the record show, we have a full quorum of commissioners. Commissioners, you have the minutes from the March 19th, 2024 Board of Commissioners meeting in your packet. You've had a chance to review them and accept them. I'll accept a motion to do so.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we accept those meeting minutes as presented. Second?
All in favor, raise your right hand. You also have the minutes from the March 19th, 2024 budget work session in your package.
I'm making a motion to accept those as presented as well. Second?
All in favor, raise your right hand. Accepted. And do we have two items to add?
Yes, Vice Chairman, for your approval, I'm sorry. For your approval, one item, item I-2A would be to have the county move to Region 7, Area, I'm sorry, Area 12 workforce of the CSRA consortium. And then item 2B would be an intergovernmental agreement between, and a trust indenture between the school district and the county.
And those are I-2A and I-2B?
Yes, sir.
Good, they are added. And welcome. Have a couple of special recognitions. First one, I'd ask Colin, our Region 3 GMA Field Director, to come forward. I know you have a presentation to give. John, come up with him.
Good evening. Hello. Good evening. Thank you to the Board of Commissioners for having me and EMA Director Sean Granato for inviting me to come this evening. This is one of the favorite parts about my job, celebrating local achievements. And with that, we have two individuals that are very deserving of that this evening. Just to give you a background of what we're looking at, the professional certified emergency managers licensure through the Georgia Emergency Management Agency has criteria that needs to be met in order to be achieved. That is achieving your basic and advanced certified emergency manager's licensure, a minimum of five years in emergency management, full-scale exercise. We didn't think he took enough training, so do 150 more hours of training. Five examples of an additional advancement to emergency management. This could be presentations, this could be trainings, articles written, special products, you know, et cetera. Within that, there are only 48 professional certified emergency managers in the state of Georgia, of which you now have three in the county, and I'm not aware of another county that has that. So congratulations there. Within that, we'll go ahead and move forward. First off, I have Corbin Cooney. Corbin started out doing emergency management with the Navy in 2016. Came up from the Gulf of Mexico to come work here in Columbia County, bringing his family with him. And when you catch him in the hallway, he's got a two-month-old baby he's very proud of. So congratulations to him on that. Corbin received his basic and advanced in record timing, less than two years. I surely didn't do that. He's a training and exercise manager. He's working on a five-year plan right now, does special assignments, and in spare time finds time to work with the Boy Scouts as well, too. So this evening, I'd like to congratulate Corbin Cooney on becoming a professional certified emergency manager. Congratulations. Up next, I've got Susie Hughes. Susie has been with Columbia County 23 years today. We looked it up, actually. Today. Okay. We looked you up. Susie's great at building relationships. She's the grants focal point for the county as well, too. And I'll tell you, at the state and federal level, grants can be very, very frustrating. It's probably a good word for that. She does a great job with it. Susie works with finances, administrative issues, personnel. Susie works with the senior center to help with weather radios and vulnerabilities with the senior centers. So that's to be congratulated as well, too. And she's very proud of her son and loves spending time with her grandchild. So again, this evening, I'd like to present Susie Hughes with the professional certified emergency manager's licensure. Congratulations. That's my time. Thank you all.
Thank you.
My understanding, there've only been 90 people in 25 years. Did I read that correctly?
That's probably about right. And to keep it up, you have to continue education. You have to do certain things. You know, there's a level of requirement there. So right now, there's only 48, and I'm one of them. So you've got about 10% in the room with you right now. So that's...
To give perspective, everyone else, only 90 people in 25 years have achieved it. That just speaks volume for you. Colin, just thank you so, so much. And Columbia County's only county with three, right? We have the lowest crime rate in the state. Thank you, Corbin. Thank you, Susie. Thank you.
Thank you.
Oh, yeah. Sean, get in a picture. Sean didn't want to speak. We need to require Sean to speak. Proud of him. I believe Vice Chairman Malir, you have a proclamation to give.
We're going to talk about Safe Digging Month, and I'm the construction person up here. So I got the privilege of doing this. I'm going to read a quick proclamation from the county. Whereas thousands of times each year, the underground infrastructure in Georgia is damaged by those who do not have underground lines located prior to digging, resulting in service interruption, environmental damage, and threat to public safety. And whereas, in 2005, the Federal Communications Commission designated 811 to provide contractors and homeowners a simple number to contact utility operators to request the location of underground lines at the intended dig site. And whereas, the Augusta-Richmond Columbia County Utility Coordinating Committee, that's a handful, a stakeholder-driven organization dedicated to the prevention of damage to underground utilities in Georgia, promotes the National 811 Notification System and Georgia 811 in an effort to reduce these damaged lines. And whereas, damage prevention is a shared responsibility. By using safe digging practices, the contractors and homeowners of Columbia County can save time, money, and help keep our infrastructure safe and connected. Now therefore, the Columbia County Board of Commissioners do hereby proclaim April 2024 as Safe Digging Month and encourage contractors and homeowners throughout Columbia County to always contact 811 before digging. Thank you very much. Now tell us, I want you to tell everybody, what do you do and why is 811 important to you?
811 is important to me because I started out my career in construction at a really young age and went to work for a construction company. And one of my jobs was calling 811. And we had probably about 60 employees. It was my job to make sure that the tickets were updated, they were called in, because it's very important. And as life has went on and I've continued my career, I'm kind of on the flip side now, which is still important, but I also have family members and coworkers that are like family and all that I want to keep protected. And I want to get the word out, because if you hit a line and it's not marked, then it's detrimental or can be detrimental. Right. And for Columbia County, with us having C-3BU or water lines or sewer lines, any of that stuff, when a line is hit, then it creates havoc for everybody. Because, right? It's very important, not just for the health and safety aspect and all, but for convenience as well.
So April 2024 is Safe Digging Month in Columbia County. Are we doing a picture?
It happens. Georgia Natural Gas was, two, three years ago, in my front yard. They thought they smelled a leak. They had this thing poking in the ground in my front yard and severed the fiber optic cable to the street.
Your neighbors do not appreciate it when that happens.
Fortunately, though, a friend of mine was CEO at the time. I called him and said, "What kind of operation are you running?" Commissioners, on to the consent agenda. Each item on this agenda has been through necessary committees and received necessary votes to be placed on this agenda. So if they still meet with your approval, I'll accept a motion to approve the ball.
Mr. Chairman, I move to accept the entire consent agenda as presented. Second?
Questions? All in favor, raise your right hand. Motion is approved. On to new business. First is a convenience store issue. You have that motion.
File RZ240302. Make a motion to disapprove the request for a rezoning from RA to C1 for property located at tax map 029, parcel 029.
Second?
It was a request, or I'm sorry, this is a request, to rezone a residential agricultural property to C1 to allow for conditional use for convenience store fuel pumps. See the orange box here on your screen at 1535 Apple Harlem Road? This was going to be for a 2,400 square foot convenience store, fuel islands along the front, diesel fuel island in the rear, only three fuel islands, three diesel pumps. It did not meet the truck's top definition.
My understanding is the sheriff had traffic concerns?
He did. We've met with DOT. DOT has full authority to approve access off of Apple Harlem Road. DOT had concerns as well. They were showing a write-in, write-out. They were going to most likely require a full island be built down the middle of Apple Harlem Road to prevent left turns in, turns out. Has that full responsibility, but that's what they're telling us now.
Is the applicant present? Are you representing Mr. Patel today? So the...
Hold on a second. Just would you state your name and address for the record, please?
Yeah, absolutely. Jeffrey Peel, attorney for the applicant.
So as you see, there's a motion to disprove this. Is the applicant aware of, if this gets turned down, how long he has to wait before he can bring it back to us?
I'm, he's not, no.
Is the applicant with us?
Yeah.
Mr. Patel? So you are aware that if we turn this down today, you can't apply again for this?
Thank you, sir.
Is it all right if I just address a few things?
Absolutely, please.
I thought I'd come say a few words. I've represented the applicant, Gas World, probably about the past five years here, as they have done a lot in Columbia County. And I think, I would ask the commission to reconsider and to grant the requests that he's made. If you look at the changes that Gas World has made in this community, the projects they've undertaken, I used to live down the street from Young's Pantry, not too far from there. I think we all remember it. No, I never met Mr. Young, but I think we can all say thank you to Gas World for coming in and rejuvenating that property.
They did a great job.
Yeah. The same thing with the property that he had on Old Evans Road. In fact, I believe Dee Patel and his family are now up to nine gas stations in the CSRA area. When these folks come in, they do it right, they do it properly. This particular parcel is about the only parcel that close to the interstate that can be developed to serve the 15,000 or so cars that come in and out, or the club car in the fulfillment center. Right now, that traffic, if they want convenience, which people do, they need gas, they need things like that, they have to drive two miles up the road or a mile down the road. He understands that he can reapply, but my understanding from the DOT is that it's something that it's a relatively easy fix. And this would be the perfect place to put a gas station in this particular community, especially looking at the plan for what Columbia County wants to do based on their 10, 15-year plan. What, this is a development area. And so I'd ask the commission to consider that.
I think it's my understanding that this violates the ordinance of alcohol versus the closest to the church.
Perv alcohol.
That's correct.
Could be able to sell for on or off premise consumption.
So alcohol cannot be served in this location. Am I correct?
A distant survey we required, I believe it's a 600-foot separation. The S1 property located here is owned by a church. They are actively having youth events for their preacher. I believe Commissioner Couch has actually spoken to the preacher. They are using, so based on our code, staff would not recommend to approve an alcohol license at this location based on current code.
Is the project still viable if you cannot get an alcohol license? Approach the ODM, please.
No, ma'am. We're spending, you know, probably about $4 million on a project out there, and not having alcohol would definitely hurt ourselves and our pro forma wouldn't make sense at that point.
If it looked like you didn't have the votes to go forward with this, would you like the opportunity to withdraw so that you don't have to wait six months?
No, ma'am. We, us and the seller weren't able to come to an agreement on that. So if it fails today, we'll be back in six months.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And I had nothing for, thank you.
Mr. Chairman, as a matter of procedure, if this fails, do we still vote on?
Yes.
The next one?
Vote, yes.
Regardless, okay.
There's a motion, second on the floor. All in favor, raise your right hand. Opposed?
Next, Chair, have item VA240303. I make a motion to disapprove the request for a variance for property located at tax map 029, parcel 029, to decrease the building separation from residential properties.
Second?
This request is basically, our code says that you have to be 100 foot from a residential used property line with any of your buildings. As you see, there are dotted lines here and here. That basically gives you that narrow strip of this land that can be used for convenience stores. So the request was to drop to a 50-foot setback to allow the building, however you turn down the zoning. So this...
Right, so.
Right.
Motion, second on the floor.
Yes, sir, Mr. Chair. Item RZ240303. I make a motion to approve the request for a rezoning from C3 to S1 for property located at tax map 078D, parcel 021B, 122 and 123B, with the condition that accommodation flat of the subject property shall be recorded, not be provided to the planning department prior to the issuance of any building permits or site plan approval, or within 60 days of this approval, whichever occurs first.
Second?
Here you have this location here in the center of the map, going from a C3 zoning back to an S1. This was previously, a S1's, our previous is on for self-storage. They're reverting back to that self-storage S1 zoning. Seven buildings on site, all of them are going to have storage in them, but one of the building will have a single-story office with a two-bedroom, two-bath apartment for the site manager, which does meet our code. About 165,000 square foot total. Breakdown's about 2,250 for the apartment and office, and the rest of it is in storage. There will be a 20-foot structural buffer along Rose Street here. The rest of the setbacks will be three foot around all remaining property sides. Happy to answer any questions. They did provide us some elevation showing nice stucco stone exteriors facing the exterior of the project. All interior buildings will be a standard metal building. Question you have?
And there will be no clock tower?
No clock tower.
As previously...
I'm looking at the engineer back here. He's saying no.
No clock tower.
Other questions? Motion, second on the floor. All in favor, raise your right hand.
Next, we have file RZ240304. I make a motion to approve the request for a major PUD revision and easement encroachment agreement for property located at tax map 067, parcel 1120. Subject to the conditions enumerated in the March 21st, 2024 Planning Commission Report.
Second?
Typical rear setbacks on residential properties is 10-foot. However, this one has a 20-foot rear setback. There's a 20-foot easement on the rear of this property as well. So we believe that the reason the setback was 20-foot was to stay out of the easement. Request is to reduce the setback down to allow for a pool to be constructed as well as leave existing shed that's in place. Will also require an encroachment agreement to be signed. Our standard language for encroachment agreements, letting them, they understand they're taking responsibility of being in our easement. This easement for swell, there's no actually buried utilities. It's all surface swell. So when they build, they will have to make sure they direct that water around their pool.
F recommends approval. Went through planning and zoning. They recommend approval.
Questions? Motion, second on the floor. All in favor, raise your right hand. Curious.
Last item for me, Mr. Chair, is file VA240305. I make a motion to disapprove the request for a variance for property located at tax map 062, parcel 086N, to increase the allowed canopy signage.
Second?
Current code allows for 12 square foot per canopy sign. On this plan, you have S4, S2, sorry, I'm on the wrong spot, S5, 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 for our canopy signs. The request is to go to 67 and a half square feet per sign. About a five-time increase over what's allowed by code. Staff did not see the need. You can see all the other blue dots are additional signs that are already approved. You have a freestanding sign out front. You have wall signs on the building as well. So staff did not agree with the request. Planning Commission also did not agree with the request. Happy to answer any questions you have about this. And I do believe the applicant...
Daniel?
The applicant did show up.
Go on down. Go, please.
Mr. Chair, members of the commission, thank you all for having us tonight. I would like to say, first of all, thank you all for working, I'm sorry.
State your name and address for the record. I'm not swearing in.
Absolutely, absolutely. Daniel Ben Israel, real estate development manager with Traton Parker Companies LLC, 17 West McDonough Street, Savannah, Georgia, 31401.
Thank you.
Again, thank you all very much. It's a pleasure to be before you again this evening. We do, I would like to say thank you all for working with us to get the sites that we have under construction and in permitting Columbia County underway. We have two locations now in the county under construction, one at Riverwood and the other at, off of Husk Box. And so we're excited. We're looking forward to doing business here and becoming corporate citizens and working with you all to improve this community. This is already beautiful. I will say that, you know, brand identity is very important for us as we enter into this new market. We have a very good brand that we've established over the last 47 years that the company's been in operation. We're looking to invest probably upwards of $120 million over the next five years in the greater Columbia County, Augusta-Richmond market. And so in doing that, we are looking to establish a brand here. Brand recognition is very important, and having the signage on our store, freestanding signage and on our canopy to identify our brand properly to our patrons is very important. So we do understand that our requests are exceed the allowable square footage. And in light of that, we are prepared to amend that request. We're amenable to shrinking that request back to only asking for canopy signage on one side of the canopy as opposed to all three. We would place a canopy sign either on the plan, oh yeah, on the plan north here, is that projecting? Yeah. Or on the plan east of the canopy there, if the commission were to approve our request. I have looked at whether or not we could, in addition to amending our request to only have canopy signage on one side of the canopy, we further looked into whether or not it would make sense to reduce size of that one sign as well. And I think we can do that and still, you know, get a sign that's meaningful and makes sense. I'm not sure what that final number would be, but it would probably be somewhere in the 40-square-foot range. So that would be my final request to the commission. I know that staff has recommended disapproval of our request as it was submitted. However, I would ask you to favorably consider my amended request for the one sign, even at a reduced square footage, if you will. That's all I have, and I'll be happy to answer any questions that, for me.
Matt, help me understand practically what that means.
So current code says you can have 12 square feet here, 12 here, and 12 here. So find 36 square feet. I believe what I heard him say was they'll give away two, change for one. That is, and it could be here or it could be here. We haven't decided yet where it's going to go. But basically ask for 40 square feet. Of the 36 he could have on three individual signs, give them 40.
Or one.
One side. 40 is not a true number yet, but we have to have a number tonight if you want them to vote tonight.
Sure. Sure. So I, I mean...
36 feet, and I think it's a done deal, isn't it?
Yeah, he did, yeah. 36, he doesn't need a...
He doesn't need anything, right?
If divided into three separate signs.
No, it's one sign.
Still do 36 feet.
So, Mr. Chair, if I may, just to shed some light on it. So we did the numbers, and if we were restricted to 12 square feet, that would essentially mean that we could only get Milo, which is the apostrophe that we use on our signage. And that would take up pretty much, I think, 10 square feet, something like that, and would leave little to no room for anything in addition. So, you know, having a sign that's 36 square feet gets us closer to where we need to be in order to fit the entire Parker's Kitchen logo on the canopy. I'll try to make that work. That's still squeezing us a bit, but if, you know, if that's what I have to work with, then I'll do my best. But if the board is so inclined, I would love to have liberty to increase that up to 40 square feet or a tad bit higher, if possible.
Matt, what would you suggest? I mean, we have a motion on the floor. I understand you can always change the motion, but I'm trying to...
If you go further down in your packet, and I'm trying to find a page number here...
It's actually, I think there were two attachments, or, and I have two attachments. You may not. You may have one.
There's a, way down in your packet actually shows all three sides of the, of the canopy.
Yeah, it's right here, actually. I think you're...
There you go. She found it. There you go. So this is what they requested. So three in a, just over three foot tall. So two foot eight tall, 25 foot...
Uh-oh.
25 feet wide. So that gets them to 67 square feet. So shrink that in half. How can, 16 inches tall by 12 foot long? I'm just kind of doing some quick math there to get down to the 30 square feet. If that's your intent, if your intent is to give him all his square footage but allow him to put it in one location versus break it over three locations, is that what you were asking?
That was his ask, I'm trying to notice.
So he could typically, but he could technically by code put three individual signs, each 12 square feet, or I'm hearing you say is one, that is 36 square feet.
Can by code or can by...
No, no, you would have to vote for that. He's getting the same amount of square footage, but he's putting it in one place versus three places. It makes the sign larger, but he doesn't have it other locations.
But there's still a sign on the building. This is just the canopy.
This is just the canopy. Not asking for the building to be changed. That code was those.
Pleasure. Right, I got that. After I amend that motion.
So you're asking for 40 feet?
If...
I know it's 36, but...
If I'm hearing, if I'm hearing the commission say that they will, if you will favorably consider it at 36 feet, 36 square feet, then I will, I will go along with that.
I will amend my motion to approve the signage for 36 feet.
In one location? In one location?
In one location.
On the canopy.
On the canopy.
That means the other two spaces go away.
Yes.
Second.
Got that, madam.
Allison.
Good. So, there's motion on the floor for one sign, thirty-six feet. Work it out with the county. Motion second on the floor, all in favor, raise your right hand.
Thank you all very much, and, um, we look forward to, uh, working with you. I really appreciate your help.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Daniel. Okay. Commissioner Couch?
Sir, I make a motion to approve an independent contractor agreement with Turnip Seed Engineers for the Blanchard Water Treatment Plant Hypochlorite and Chemical Improvements in the amount of five-hundred-nine-thousand, five-hundred-and-eighty dollars. Five-seven-zero-three-seven-five dot zero-one-five-six-nine-six.
Second.
This is a request to approve this contract with a design firm, Turnip Seed Engineers, to, um, basically expand our existing chemical building, um, have new chlorine generation equipment, new chemical tanks, uh, scale of modifications required. This will allow us to produce more of our chlorine. Right now, we're buying, I'm sorry, right now, we're planning on buying chlorine work with our UV system. However, since we budgeted, that price has almost quadrupled, if not quintupled, in cost. If we were to expand our current chemical plant and start making all that we need, we have about an eight-year return on investment. So, after eight years, we start group all the money we spent building, and now we start saving money versus buying the hypochlorite. Uh, this is just a design contract out of essential renewal. It's five-hundred-nine-thousand, five-hundred-and-eighty dollars. That's based on a seven percent, seven-point-six percent cost of construction. So, that's a fair number for construction. We probably get a little cheaper than that, Stacy. Probably can get that number down some, construction cost. This is just the design point. Right now, essential renewal, if we do get this design, we will bring back a contract for the construction. That will most likely be a bond project bring back to you, but again, we're a little ways off from that, so right now, we just want to get a design, get it underway.
I'm with the design take.
Probably about twelve months.
Questions? Motion second on the floor, all in favor, raise your right hand.
I make a motion to approve the first reading of Resolution twenty-four dash zero seven to establish streetlight district number two-zero-two-three-five-five-two for White Road.
Second.
This is a, uh, citizen request a streetlight district. You have the data in front of you there of our cost to install. We will generate a revenue of twelve-hundred dollars per year. This is one of our first existing subdivisions to go through our new streetlight policy, and so far, it's been...
All in favor, raise your right hand.
Yes, sir. I make a motion to award and approve the Fiber Construction Maintenance and Restoration Services Agreement with Total Outdoor Plant Solutions LLC.
Second.
This is a great segue. A few allusions were made earlier, reference fiber cuts. Uh, that's what this agreement is all about. So, uh, Mr. Blanchard's gonna come up and briefly describe the details. Briefly describe the details of this agreement.
Great keys to giving us... Be brief.
And be gone.
Thank you.
Don't take that as a threat.
Alright, thank you.
I'll be brief.
And then be gone.
We currently work with another company called Highlighter for these type services. Uh, we've had so much growth in the community. Got our, the needs of the broadband utility, along with needs traffic engineering and other road construction projects, that the, the demand on Highlighter is really outstripping their supply. So, the broadband utility worked with the procurement department in order to contract. Um, and in honor of Safe Digging Month, approval. If you have any detailed technical questions, Harold here can light up his department.
You're looking at me and asking me that question?
Have we worked with this contractor before?
This contractor?
It would, we bid this out?
It was bid out, yes, ma'am. And I believe that some of our other business partners have worked.
And what exactly do they do if somebody cuts one of the lines? They help fix it?
Whenever you, you drive down the road, you see a pickup truck, a trailer, a big orange
conduit.
Bowl of fiber.
And a bunch of guys standing around? Those are your guys?
Those are the supervisors.
Okay.
Anyway, they have a boring machine or a trenching machine. They'll, they dig underground after calling in their locates. They place the conduit, and then they'll actually place the fiber, so it can be done for new construction or when the unfortunate backhoe comes along and creates a situation.
That they're on call when there's an emergency, somebody's cut something, they can...
Are they on call?
Uh, they have a, there's a provision in the contract for a twenty-four-seventy.
That's not what happened to me, but good that we're better than...
No, we generally do have good luck with it, um, with fiber restoration, but it is, uh, again, like you said, it's just they're, they don't have the crews that they had. We can do some of our own splicing ourselves, but, uh, generally speaking, when you call them, squirrel, the squirrel times are pretty short.
They do work through the night.
Yeah, they will. And we have tested it.
Which super, which, um, staff member supervises this contractor?
Broadband manager. Well, that probably, you, you come up, Harold is, is over all of that. His outside plant manager would be...
Yes, I would supervise him, but it's delegated to my construction manager as well. Um, this group of contractors, we've worked with the diggers before. Uh, these are people that work with other telecoms, such as Unity, Segra. They're contracted through them as well. So, they're highly recommended, and we've helped them out before several times since they're our partners.
Other questions?
Yes, sir.
Thank you, gentlemen. I can't imagine it happening at midnight, 'cause when they were boring in my front yard, it was a boom, boom. It was shaking the house.
Usually, the cut occurs around five PM.
On Friday.
Uh, on a Friday. True.
Holiday weekend, too.
And then the repair bill is complete.
Motion is second on the floor, all in favor, raise your right hand.
I make a motion to move Columbia County to Region Seven, Area Twelve, Worksource CSRA Consortium.
Second.
Give you a brief background on this. Columbia County is currently, uh, in another region, uh, with the western counties of the state. Um, and decision's been made for us to move to Area Twelve, which is the Augusta region of the workforce consortium. I'll answer any other questions you may have. Another chairman's familiar as well.
Better service to citizens of Columbia County.
We're the only county making this move, or you think, or we're the only one now and others will follow?
Questions? All in favor, raise your right hand.
I make a motion to approve entering into an intergovernmental agreement and trust indenture with Columbia County School District for the sanitary septic system located at twenty-eight ninety Ray Owens Road contingent on final approval of the county manager.
Second.
Uh, just to give you a little background here, you said twenty-eight ninety. Is it twenty-eight oh nine or twenty-eight ninety?
Twenty-eight ninety.
Okay, it's twenty-eight oh nine on that sheet. I just want to make sure that, that the motion was correct. Thank you, Madam Vice Chair. Uh, this is a, uh, intergovernmental agreement, a trust indenture with the school board. DNR has a requirement that if they have a private septic system, that a government entity take that or, or be willing to take that over if, in fact, it fails or if they ever, um, don't maintain it properly. Uh, so, this is, this requirement has been placed on us because we're the only government entity that can do that. Um, we thought it best, me working with the county attorney and the county attorney working with the school board's attorney, thought it'd be best for us to enter into an IGA to make sure that there was ever any costs associated with that, that the school board would bear that. Uh, spoke with superintendent, he is fine with that, but this is something that we need to get done quickly, 'cause it's actually holding their project up. This is just an additional layer, um, of, of, of government regulation at the state level that has to be taken care of. So, we are still working through the IGA. Um, uh, I believe the motion did give me the authority to close that out once it's done. We're close to that. Uh, we've got a couple things we just need to tweak.
There be any money-changing hands? Transaction?
No money change. It, it's very unlikely that the school board would allow the septic system to fail, especially on an operating school. Uh, but if they do, we actually have it in our IGA that they would be responsible for the, whatever cost, whatever it costs us to maintain that, they would have to do it. So, now there is no exchanging of money.
I'll say to you, the, the only change that should happen is because of the all this, we have an engineered plan rather than a recordable survey.
The state says that we have to have title, we have to have that property, we have to hold that property. And of course, we don't want to hold the property to the entire school, so we have some things we need to work around to make that work for them.
Thank you.
Other questions? Motion is second on the floor, all in favor, raise your hand. Periods. Public comments or participation? Drew? You were yawning. I saw that. Yeah, I called him out. Drew, we have a couple of executive session items right here and now.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to accept the donation from David Byrd and David Byrd Enterprises, LLLP, parcel zero-two-nine-zero-one-one, Oakton Center Properties, LLLP, parcel zero-two-nine-zero-three-zero E, and Coal Development Co., Inc., parcel zero-five-one-one-eight-nine-seven, to obtain additional temporary and permanent easements for the Harlem Force Main Project.
Second.
Matty?
This is part of the Harlem Force Main. We have approximately five parcels left to get, and we'll have this one wrapped up. We're working close. We're, we're ready to go to bid. We're ready to go to bid on this one. Starting very soon.
Questions? All in favor, raise your right hand.
I make a motion to approve a settlement agreement and general release with Heather Diedrickson, parcel zero-eight-two-I-two-six-two-B for Stormwater Project.
Second.
This is where we failed to get, negotiate, um, access to put in a, a storm pipe. Um, suit was filed, we came to an agreement on it, um, settled out that agreement of us paying for the...
Questions? Raise your right hand.
I make a motion to approve eight thousand dollars to Travis Stewart, parcel zero-six-seven-A-zero-two-nine, fifty-one thousand dollars to Maria Mann, parcel zero-seven-two-A-zero-zero-seven, twenty thousand six hundred to Walton and Jacqueline Campbell, parcel zero-six-zero-zero-three-four, and accept the donation from BNR Sneed Properties LLC, parcel zero-seven-two-B-one-two-zero, to obtain right-of-way and/or easements for the Hereford Farm widening, Hereford Farm Road widening project.
Any to purchase property for the widening project, this gets us to thirty-four percent complete?
All in favor, raise your right hand.
I make a motion to approve one thousand two hundred dollars, parcel zero-seven-two-D-zero-three-five, four thousand five hundred dollars, parcel zero-seven-two-D-zero-three-six, four hundred forty-seven thousand six hundred dollars, parcel zero-seven-two-D-zero-three-seven, and three hundred and one thousand dollars, parcel zero-seven-two-D-zero-three-eight, to the Sanctuary of Augusta, Inc., to obtain right-of-way and/or easements for the Hereford Farm Road Widening Project.
Second.
Yeah, this is sanctuary easements. Uh, two of these parcels, we are having to actually take the actual structure as well, which is why the cost are so high on this, and this gets thirty-six percent complete on this project.
Questions? All in favor, raise your right hand.
I make a motion to approve Resolution number twenty-four dash zero, twenty-four dash twenty, Declaration of Taking and Order by Condemnation for a portion of tax map zero-seven-two-A-zero-five-seven for the improving widening, paving, aligning, and maintaining of Hereford Farm Road Widening Project.
A breakdown and, and thought process of value of the property. Or doesn't agree with our negotiate, or our appraisal on the property, so condemnation. He, he's aware.
Questions? All in favor, raise your right hand. Believe there any other items? Rest, I guess only one more motion needs to be made.
I make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Right hand, we are moved. Oh, no, we're not moved.
Adjourn.
Either way. We moved.
We be gone.